District 721, New Prague Area Schools. Meetings are recorded and can be viewed by accessing the school board page on the district website. There is no open forum request this evening, but in the future, if you do have a desire to do the open forum, you certainly are welcome to do so. Contact our office and you will find the parameters of that and the guidelines for doing the open forum. Normally, I would start the next part of our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, but I like to differ from that a little bit this evening. We lost one of our staunchest supporters of our school district this past Sunday, Don Dvojak, who was a teacher of math in our school district. He was a parent of graduates of our school. He was a coach. He attended many activities, many activities, and was just the best person that you could ask for in terms of supporting our school district. We will greatly miss him. He, he had just the, the best attitude that you could imagine, and he became a school board member as well. I don't want to leave that out. So he was on the school board for, I believe, thirteen years, and I was able to be on the board with him, and we had some interesting times, and he always stood up for public education and the New Prague Area Schools. So rest in peace, Don, and I'd like to have us take a moment of silence to remember him, please. Thank you. Now we will say our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is going to be a slight change in our presentations today. We're going to, after the consent agenda has been addressed, we are going to have our softball coach come forward and talk about a softball trip that her team would like to put forth and have our approval of. And then we're going to have our audit report as well, and then we'll go back into the regular schedule of the reports after that. So go ahead for a spotlight on success, Maren. While we're getting set up, I just wanted to mention that all seven board members are present.
My apologies. So I wanted to simply provide a brief update from the Academic Services Department as to a few things from last year and going into this year. Read Act has been at the forefront of academic services for a couple of years now. And a few updates, last year, we are proud to share that we had a hundred percent of our staff who entered the training at the fall of 2024, complete the training at the end of 2025. That was a big feat. This was over sixty staff members, plus all of our early learning staff completed their training. It was a separate training, but nonetheless, we had a hundred percent completion rate. And so that was all of our K-5 classroom teachers, along with identified K-12 special education teachers, along with the early learning certified staff. And this was a big accomplishment for Phase One of Read Act. Phase Two, part of that is this year, we have all paraprofessionals are engaging in a shorter condensed version of Read Act training. So for context, the K-12 special ed and K-5 professional development was fifty-seven hours of PD that we had staff release time for. We adjusted our calendar last year with your support, and the early learning professional development was approximately thirty hours. So this year, we have paraprofessionals going through eight hours of training. That training was created by the Minnesota Department of Education, and we have two staff, Lisa Weiner and Kelly Frye, who went to a training this summer and who are now able to deliver the training onsite. And we have days throughout the school year where paras are invited and expected to attend. We broke it up into four, four two-hour sessions, and so that will be ongoing throughout this year. And we had, at Session One, when all of our, based on the hiring date, we did have all paras complete that first training, so we're well on track to have high completion rate with our paraprofessionals as well. We are also going through a elementary reading curriculum pilot right now. We have seventeen K-5 classroom teachers who are looking at two curriculums, and they are approved vendors from the Minnesota Department of Ed who gave us recommended curriculums. So we are looking at, in E, a program called EL, and the other one is called Arts and Letters. And so we have a team that's working through the EL pilot right now during first quarter, and then that team will switch to the Arts and Letters curriculum second quarter. And then I will come to district advisory and school board later this winter and share more updates about that with our goal to implement Fall of '26 for K-5 elementary reading. And then another part of Read Act, it continually unfolds. Every year, the legislature unpacks and clarifies additional details. And so another piece that is in there is regarding our secondary ELA teachers. So they will undergo training right now as scheduled for the '26-'27 school year. We're still waiting for the Department of Ed to release the training that secondary teachers will need to do. We've been told that it will be different than what was approved for elementary and pre-K. So once those plans unfold, we'll work with, we'll work with our teachers on what that will look like, but that's part of our phased development that really impacts our staff. There's also different student assessment components that also continue to unfold each year. Then I want to highlight, in early October, we had our Second Annual Career and Tech Day. Some of you attended, and we grew over twenty businesses and tech schools from last year, so this was huge growth. We took up all the gyms and the high school, and it was a really exciting time. Plus, we had a handful of businesses that were out in the parking lot, and so we were grateful for a sunny day, and kids were really engaged with the businesses and learning a lot. And I think getting, the idea is that they're getting ideas of what future classes they should continue to take at New Prague and beyond, while also making deep connections with businesses. So all of our 10th and 11th graders attended this half-day event. We had two keynote speakers that kicked it off for our 10th graders, and we, I linked in here that Janelle will send out later, just an overview of our CT day that highlights all the businesses that participated, along with a newly created Career Connect video that Julie Schmitz created that features Mr. Thorstedt and Ms. Shute, along with video of our students in the field and talking about the different mentorships that we have, the internships that Lindsay specifically is working to expand under her guidance of the Youth Skills Training Grant. And I'm proud to report that earlier today, New Prague Area Schools was featured in the Minnesota Youth Skills Training Grant email that goes to districts across the state, and this is thanks to Lindsay's hard work in expanding opportunities specific to healthcare, but she's also been able to work with other businesses as well. So I will make sure that Superintendent Volmuth can share that out with all of you. He was really excited to see us being featured in there. There's clips from our students, what they had to say, and it's all really in thanks to the partnerships that we've been able to establish with great businesses and the people at those businesses that are willing to open their doors and take our students in and guide our students. It's really been a great partnership to see it grow, and I think just the expansion of having fifty-five businesses compared to thirty-five businesses last year really shows the investment that area businesses are willing to really invest in our students. And then I want to highlight, this year, we have a couple of professional development, professional development days that are set aside. We have had one that was at the end of September. We have another one coming up here in November, and then our third one for all staff will be in January. And the buildings have a variety of sessions that they lead their staff through, but a couple to note that are impacting a big cohort of our staff. We have been working with South Central Services Co-op for the past year. It started last year, and they have different staff that are able to help districts in different areas, and so we are working with two of their math specialists, and they are coming in and helping our teachers grow in professional development, specifically around math practices and concepts. And so it's tailored differently to our elementary teachers compared to our secondary teachers and our special ed teachers. However, all of our teachers who teach math are working on this professional development, and it's not curriculum-based at this time, but it's really been a good opportunity for our staff to engage in new practices, concepts, and getting staff to reflect on their own instruction, including, I have here, student discourse, how they're choosing tasks for their students, what is the level of rigor that we're teaching to, and that will be ongoing throughout this year and possibly into next year. So we are grateful for the partnership that we have with South Central Service Co-op, and that is free of charge for us to utilize, and the staff that we have been able to use are very willing to, they meet with our principals on a regular basis outside of the professional development days, and also teachers as needed. So it's great to have their expertise. And then the other piece I wanted to highlight is there is a team of eleven staff and admin that are taking part in a fifteen-hour Minnesota MTSS course. It's a virtual course. We are halfway through, and this is going to help us. You'll see there the logo from the Minnesota MTSS. It's really helping us to refine and look at what are our multi-tiered systems of support as a whole system. So we have staff representing pre-K all the way up through our high school level, admin and staff, and right now, there's a lot of reflection. There are some audits that we're doing. There's ratings that we give ourselves to reflect, and this will guide areas of growth, both from a staffing perspective, systems in terms of even what type of, what type of meetings are we having? How are we collecting the data on our students, and how is that impacting our next steps? Looking at our assessment practices, and also looking at our family engagement? How are we engaging our stakeholders, and how can we refine all of those practices? So we're halfway through, and the course will finish in December, and then we'll really be able to roll our sleeves up and provide some good reflection with all of our teams on recommendations for future improvement in regard to our multi-tiered systems of support system. So those were some of the big pieces that were specific to last year and this year. And then I just want to touch on profile of a graduate. Many of you have been involved with this, but this is a big, this is really at the heart right now of academic services, and looking at the tenants that we've created, and our staff are continuing to look at these tenants and reflect on how they are providing opportunities for our students, pre-K and all the way up in these areas, and where are the areas that we need to provide maybe a little bit more, and where are the areas that we provide ample opportunity? And really looking through that from a lens that all kids are being provided with these opportunities, and looking at doing a class audit, and so it's not just particular to certain classes. It's we want to make sure that all students are given, given the opportunity. So I linked in here our district guide that we have specific opportunities at the building level that are kind of our starting point, but this is also worked on during staff professional development days, and then it's also tied to our CACR goal, which is our new acronym from MDE, which stands for Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness. So that acronym replaces World's Best Workforce. And so I just wanted to make sure that was in there. That's been a multi-year work that really started with our district advisory and will now carry through at the building level. So we provided posters for all of our staff with these five tenants, so they're in classrooms and just a really good visual of, of the work that we're continuing to do for our students in providing some of these really great qualities that really look differently, certainly at the early learning level, all the way up to our high schoolers, but they're all very important as we work with our students. So that is what I wanted to just provide an update on. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Yes, Karen?
The curriculum pilot for K-5?
Yes.
Math?
Reading.
Does that, does that connect to the Read Act?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not something separate from that?
Correct. So when the Read Act first came out three years ago, they said that they were going to release approved curriculums, and so they released those curriculums last year, and so we are looking at some of the highly vetted vendors that, that came out of there. They gave different vendors different rating systems. They continue to change some of that, so we're trying to keep up as best we can, but the two that we're looking at are from the highly approved vendor list.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Maren.
Yep.
There is no call for open forums, so then we'll go to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moving seconded, all in favor? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes. Then we have the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes. Now we'll stray a little bit from the original agenda and have our request for the softball team trip by our softball coach.
Hello, my name is Melissa DeGatano, and I'm the head softball coach. What we would like to do this year is we would like to take our team to Cocoa Beach, Florida for spring break in order to prepare for our season. So the goal is to offer a great opportunity for kids and then also collaborate with another district in our region, which Eden Prairie is also going to be down there at the same time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
You can. I actually took a team down there once, so.
Oh!
Yeah, this is, I'm going to vote yes a thousand times for this, because it's just so good for the kids. Softball-wise and just being together that much, it's great. I remember that a couple of years ago, when I did this, we ran into trouble with sanctioned games and unsanctioned games. That's all fixed now, I'm assuming?
Yes, and they've recently changed to the, like, the rules as far as, like, tournaments being counted as one versus the other. So we do, we are going to scrimmage once, and then that will count as our scrimmage. So even though it's one team, it's going to be for that distance. However, it's really important for us to kind of lean on Eden Prairie. They've done it for a lot of years, but also they have equipment down there.
Oh, okay.
Which they are willing to share with us.
Wow, that's nice.
And some of their resources have been very helpful in the planning process, just because it can be overwhelming when you take it on at first.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's great. I'm glad that you have that connection there.
Yes, we're so fortunate, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the softball trip.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have the audit report.
Well, Brian, did you want to make any first comments? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. This is Ryan Engelstett. Ryan is a partner with Bergen KDV and was the partner on our audit this year, and so Ryan will take you through a presentation. The presentation's loaded onto Board Docs, as, as is the communications letter, and also the financial statements. And so basically, I'll just turn it over to you, Ryan.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Good evening, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here with you to, to discuss the results of the audit work that we did for the district for the fiscal year that ended June 30 of 2025. And as Brian indicated, and I'm sure as you've, as you've noticed in your, in your packet of information for the meeting, the full deliverables that we provide as part of the audit are included in the packet, but what we do just to streamline and hit on the, the key items within the deliverables, but in a, in a format that makes it, you know, pretty easy to, to work through within ten to fifteen minutes, as we have a slide deck here to, to capture those highlights. But certainly, if there's anything that I do not touch on that you, that caught your eye in the more extended documents that were in the packet, certainly feel free to, to bring up any questions or comments that you have in that regard, too. So, so with that, going into the reports that we issue, so at the front end of the financial statements document, towards the front is our independent auditor's report. Within there, there's various sections, the first being the opinion section in, in that regard, and that's the, the portion of the, of that report that gets the most attention by, by the users of the information, whether it be the, at the state level, the Department of Education, the State Auditor's Office, bond rating agencies, and so forth. They look, you know, for sure, you know, certainly to see that the financial statements for the district do have that unmodified opinion included with them. That is the type that we are providing again this year. You don't see the word unmodified or clean as another term that's often used for it in the paragraphs that are in there, but that is the, the type of opinion that's, that's being rendered, okay? And then, you know, the, the second bullet point here, just reiterating the fact that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects with, with regards to the generally accepted accounting practices. As part of our duties as the auditors, we design and execute an audit approach that, of course, adheres to the professional standards, and it puts us in a position where we can provide reasonable assurance that there would not be any material misstatements that would go undetected as part of the process, and that term reasonable assurance is used intentionally by the standard-setting body, because we, we're not testing everything, so we can't provide absolute assurance, but the reasonable assurance is considered to provide a high level of confidence, ninety to ninety-five percent confidence, that again, there won't be anything material that would go undetected, okay? Well, then there's a couple other reports that we do issue as, as part of the overall audit package as well. The first one is required under government auditing standards. It really touches primarily on, on internal control matters, and as part of an, just a traditional annual audit of a school district or for really any, any type of governmental entity, the audit requirements are such that the work we do related to internal controls is not a deep dive as far as doing expanded testing, things like that. We gain an understanding of the controls that are in place, do some various walkthroughs, and, and then based on that, conclude if there's anything significant or material to, to disclose and by way of findings. The, the finding that we do have, and this has been in, included in the district's audit communications for a number of years, and very similar for all, you know, districts of, of your size, is that when it comes to separation of duties, having, having complete, you know, as far as checks and balances, complete separation between those involved in the, the initiating of transactions, the processing, the reconciling, so on and so forth, most times, if not, if not, in all cases, for an entity of, of New Prague School District size, it's not cost beneficial to have that complete separation, just the additional folks that you'd have to have on staff and such. So there's, there's things that we look at to see that there's other compensating controls in place, reviews that, that occur both at the, at the management level as well as at the board level, keeping an eye on the, on the finances for the district. And then from there, we ultimately conclude on what the severity of the finding is. Because of the mitigating controls, we do report it as the lower level of a finding. It's, it's referred to as a significant deficiency versus the material weakness category. Okay? So then, the next bullet point here relates to the work that we do on the federal funding that the district receives. There's specific requirements that are in place as far as the programs that we look at for our detailed compliance testing, and then also the, the type of procedures we, we perform on those are very much prescribed by the Department of Education or, or other federal agencies that would be involved. So the work we did this year for the district included the detailed testing of both the child nutrition cluster for the, the food service area, as well as the special education cluster, given the extent of the, the expenditures that came through related to those or the, the funding. So some years, it's just one of the programs. This year, it was both, because there is some rotational things that we have to look at in terms of the last time that program was tested, all that. So it was a little bit of an added effort this year to, to capture both programs. The, the sub-bullet point there, actually, I'll jump to the last two first. Everything checked out very well with the, the testing we did from a compliance perspective on those two areas, so we do not anticipate that we'll report any findings. The caveat that we have this year is that the compliance supplement that the federal government issues on an annual basis and that it applies for all, it's, it's based on a June 30 year-end, so for all June 30, 2025 audits and going forward, the supplement that we have to look to as the auditors has not been released yet. Most times, the, the procedures don't change drastically from one year to the next, so we're fairly confident that the, the testing we performed has led us to an appropriate conclusion. However, the guidance we've received from the Single Audit Quality Center of the AICPA is, is instructing firms to not issue any single audit reports yet, so the federal awards portion of the overall report will get formally issued at a later date, but we've really, you know, unless there's something that comes through in this compliance supplement, we've in essence completed our test work on that, so, okay? All right, then one other area we look at is Minnesota legal compliance. So the State Auditor's Office issues a, a compliance, a guide that we go through to look at pertinent state statutes. Everything checked out well in that regard, so no findings to report on that front. And then in our communications letter that we issue, we include, in addition to our required communication points, which touches on things like how the audit went, if there are difficulties, things like that, everything is very favorable. That's included within that portion of the overall letter. Brian and Chrissy and others involved here in gearing up for the audit, assisting us with questions and providing documentation throughout the process, very, very helpful, and, and it was a good, good experience as we expected going in, so we're, we're very pleased with that, and just wanted to, to share that comment, but that part of the letter, again, like I said, standard communications, all, all very good. The other part of the letter gets into various financial trend analysis and looking at different items. A lot of the focus there is on the general fund, so I'm going to touch on just a few things real quick here that we're communicating through that communications letter and provide just some side commentary to the information that's included on the screen. So just to show a ten, I guess it's technically eleven-year trend of where the state has been in terms of the General Ed Aid Formula allowance, of course, a couple, FY24 is the year where it bumped up, there was a four percent increase, and then for the year that we just audited, going back to the, the more of the normal two percent increase. We'll see some of that come through in the graphs that we look at, and I'll provide some, some commentary in that regard. And then, of course, FY26, going to that two-point-seven. First, we'll look at the enrollment levels. So here, the first one looks at, without getting into some of the weighted, the, the weighting that happens with some of these calculations, this is just the, the more basic just resident average daily membership, and then adjustment for open enrollment, which we go into more detail on that in the following slide here, too. But as is shown here on the graph, some continued declines. The, the resident ADM was down- But as is shown here on the graph, some continued declines. The, the resident ADM was down about three, when you look at just the 20, going from 2024 to FY '25, it was about a 3% decrease that occurred there. Here's just the same information provided in, in graph form as oftentimes it's a lot easier to, to see the, the, the trend and such when you can have it in, in that form of a visualizations. But really nothing further to add there. So then we get into more of the weighted calculations, looking at the pupil units, which of course is what gets applied to the, that formula allowance figure for Gen Aid revenue. So here with this, the, the change from '24 to going to '25 was not as, quite as significant. It was about a 2% decrease instead of the 3%. And that's because of the continued open enrollment gains that the district experiences resulting in, in not as significant as, of a decline as it happened in the resident ADMs. Okay? Again, they're similar, just graph form. So then getting to this slide here, just showing the, the primary revenue sources. The federal revenue coming in is in that other category. That's what makes up a, a significant portion of that. But for the general fund, it's a, not, next graph or the next slide has a pie chart that just shows that in percentages. State revenue is about 83%. There you can see going from '23 to '24 on the state revenue line where the significant jump came into place with that 4% increase in the Gen Aid formula. And then going back to the 2% increase for FY '25, coupled with a roughly 2% decline in the pupil units. On General Ed Aid, it basically stayed flat year over year. But the increase of about $800,000 on state revenue there going from 42 to 42.8, is really driven based on additional special, special ed aid coming through. Okay? But property taxes stayed basically flat year over year. And some of that slight dip does relate and we'll see in a budget to actual schedule, some, but, some variance there just with some levied taxes that are in delinquent, delinquent status that those, those revenue dollars ultimately will, will come through. Just didn't, did not happen within the current year. So, okay? Here's that pie chart on the allocation. These percentages stayed very, very similar. I think it went from 82 to 83% for state revenue compared to the previous year. Okay? And then here's similarly for the general fund expenditures. These stayed rather consistent as well and very much in line with what we see at other school districts in terms of the allocation amongst the, the different categories and, and regular instruction, et cetera. Very much in line with what we see other, elsewhere. Okay? And then here's the budget to actual schedule for the general fund. And here you can see that with the amended budget on the revenue side came in very close to that total budget on the property tax line. At the top there you can see a slight, slight variance and then some smaller positive variances going the other way, bringing it as close to kind of that, that budgeted level as, as can be, just 20,000 variance. And then down in the expenditure section, it was a variance of about 3%, 1.5 million positive compared to the, the amended budget. So good, good cost containment efforts there and, and a lot of things that are not necessarily known with certainty in terms of personnel costs and things like that, how that will all shake out throughout the course of the year. So that's really the, the driver of those variances, along with in the sites and buildings line. There were some budgeted expenditures based on, you know, potential, you know, projects for long-term facilities maintenance, things like that. That did not happen yet by the end of FY '25. So that's what drove that variance. Okay? Overall, with the amended budget, the plan, the, the anticipation was a $1.2 million increase to the fund balance for the general fund with the, with the positive variance on the expenditure side. Ended up being about a $2.7 million increase to fund balance there. So we'll look at next here or after this, this slide, we'll look at kind of where that fund balance position is at compared to other districts and, and target levels and so forth. So, okay? So here on this, on this graph that shows the, again, five-year trend, gives again the, the revenue and expenditure experience. But then the majority of this slide looks at that fund balance breakdown. A lot of the, you know, in, in terms of the total dollar or proportionate share, the majority of the fund balance for the district is in that unassigned category. But then there are the various restricted categories that are required by state statute. So the balances for each of those is presented here, too. Looking down at the bottom with, with the, the planned, from a budget perspective, some of the plans that were put into place and, and executed to build that fund balance back up, you can see there that, you know, going from 2021 at about 6.4 dipped down to that $3 million level for the unassigned fund balance line. And now it's made its way back up to almost exactly where it was at the end of FY '21. Okay? So when it comes to fund balance, the, the common metric that's looked at is how much coverage is that providing of the annual expenditures of, of that, of that fund? And the graph that's shown here gives an indication as to where New Prague Schools is at compared to the average for all traditional school districts across, across the state of Minnesota. And then also gives you a sense as to, again, that, that trend. Now, when it comes to fund balance for school districts, a common goal is to be in that, you know, one to, having one to two months of coverage of expenditures just to ensure that appropriate cash flow is there to, to meet the payroll and other expenditure needs as, as they're coming through. And again, looking back at where it dipped down to at the end of '23, got to be less than one month of, of coverage on the expenditures. And now it's made its way back up, getting closer to, you know, that two-month level, just shy of that by the end of FY '25. So certainly a good position to be at. And you can see kind of a similar, albeit the, the average for all school districts is probably higher, but kind of a similar trend where it dipped in '23 and now starting to make its way back up again. So, okay? Well, that's the general fund. We'll conclude here real quick by just looking at the food service and community service funds. So here with food service, a slight decrease on the revenue side based on, on, for the school lunch program. Some of the, the federal funding decreased there based on a number of meals served and so forth. On the expenditure side, an increase there due to both personnel costs and the other piece was some equipment purchases that came through in FY '25 as well. Still with all that being considered, able to provide an additional $100,000 to the fund balance position for that fund and sitting at 1.7 million. Certainly a very good position compared to the overall, the annual expenditures as well as, you know, where that fund was at, you know, back four or five years ago. Okay? Then finish up here with the Community Service Fund. With this one, it's stayed quite level year over year at about 4.7, 4.8 million dollars in both revenues and expenditures. With expenditures exceeding the revenues in the current year and having very, in total, having minimal fund balance there. Going into the year, it did dip into negative territory, about $66,000 in, looking at it in total. Towards the bottom of the graph, you, or slide here, you can see the breakdown of the different components of fund balance. So most of that movement that happened going from '24 to '25 was in that school readiness category. And with that going from about an $80,000 positive to about a $65,000 deficit fund balance position there. So, okay? So that is it as far as the comments that I wanted to share with the group here tonight. So again, very, very pleased with how everything went with the audit process. It was, it was my first year being involved, as, as Brian mentioned, in, in the district's audit. I've been doing school district audits and governmental audits for many years. But it was good to get involved in, in the audit for the, for the district and look forward to the next audit cycle. So with that, glad to field any questions that folks may have in regards to information I share or if, again, if there's anything that I did not touch on that you want to discuss, too. So.
Ryan, is it unusual for school districts to have a negative fund balance when it comes to the Community Service Fund?
The Community Service Fund is one that tends to hover right around, you know, you know, it's a very small positive or does dip into the negative territory from time to time. So is, is it, is it common? You know, I don't know if I, if I could speak to that off the cuff, but it, it does happen. We see it, you know, certainly from, from time to time. So.
Other questions for Ryan? Ryan, do you have any additional comments that you'd like to make?
Just a thank you to Ryan and his team. You know, he mentioned it was good to work with us and it was good to work with them, too. And so Ryan and I have worked together at Southwest Metro and so it's, it's good to connect again here and so we appreciate the work that they do. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since there are no further questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report.
It's all moved.
Do a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes 7-0. Next we'll go to the Board Committee reports and CAC is the first one that's up. Special Education Services. And we reviewed the purpose of our committee and it is to try to encourage parental involvement in their children's special education programs that they're being given here at the New Prague School District. We covered the new year in terms of having a number of new staff members, but we are fully staffed. So that's really great news. We talked about a topic that we kind of hit on last spring and that was regarding post-graduation transitions. And our students are involved in special education up until the age of 22. And then after 22, the programs stop as far as the local districts are concerned. So it's always been a topic to try to help parents make that transition from a school type of support setting to one where they've got to be on their own. So that's been a topic that's going on and we had a post-graduation information event survey. So we'll see how that comes out. Let's see. We talked about inclusivity for our students and how to try to promote it. And we are looking at, perhaps looking at some information as to how to help students be as included as possible in the mainstream in our, in our. And we also had a presentation by Amy on the referendum and how it impacts special needs children. And basically, the meeting. Any questions? Then we had our Southwest Metro meeting last Tuesday on the 21st of September. And it went quite well. The main item that was covered during the meeting was presentations by our directors as to how our plan is going forward in terms of meeting the needs of the different programs and how the programs are working to, to do the best job that they can to meet the needs of the students in the different programs. Each division, so to speak, had their chance to talk about how things are progressing and how the situation is going. And I believe the strategic plan is being followed quite, quite well. And it's being met to hear the needs of the students and the successes of the programs as well. And then we also had another very interesting discussion about the building that Southwest Metro is going to be purchasing in Morristown. And it's kind of a complicated set of hoops that we have to jump through to get that taken care of in terms of the, the acquisition of that, of that building. It's a, it's a, been found to be a very good building and one that will serve that area of the Southwest Metro population quite well. And New Prague could, students could be quite impacted by, by the purchase of that, too, because they would have a choice or an opportunity to be able to attend programs in Morristown as well. But anyway, the, the main thing that we looked on is how the funding will be borne mostly by the associate members that are in that section of the Southwest Metro. And the regular members that are more toward the metro area, will that be impacted very much financially whatsoever if the plans are carried out? So. Complicated, interesting, and they're progressing very nicely. Andy, do you have anything to add on that from the superintendent's standpoint?
No, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, so I don't have an update, anything more than what you just shared. So.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I think the Morristown School District, forgive me, is discussing the closing of that building as we speak or in the very near future. So I think it's a work in progress for sure.
Amy, thank you. And then we'll go on to the next committee and that's the Legislative Committee.
I'll take that. The Legislative Committee has not met since our last board meeting. However, you may know that the New Prague Area School District is a member of SAF or SAFE, schools advocating for fair funding. A SAFE meeting was held last week. Dr. Velmuth attended in person and Mr. Colaney attended virtually. They presented their legislative platform, which addresses the changes that they would like to see made to funding formulas in a nutshell. They'll be meeting again on Thursday. Our committee will be meeting again next month to discuss SAF's platform in relation to our own and we would expect to have more to share with you at our next business, business meeting.
You have any questions for the Legislative Committee? Next is Community Education.
We had a meeting on October 7th. Sandy talked about the upcoming referendum and early voting, just the usual spiel for everybody. We discussed various community education programs, including summer recap, going into the fall and looking ahead. I'm not going to touch on early childhood because that's yours. But adult classes, typically you don't see as much with adults as you do with the kids. But they had great participation this year in fitness, pickleball and cooking classes. They have several new instructors joining us in the fall for new opportunities. And dance freedom, I guess, seems to be a popular class. And the Fitness and Aquatic Center, they're, they have established equipment replacement cycle. So they're working on that. And then new enhancements to utilizing a Studio 2 for virtual exercise classes. And they're reviewing the pros and cons of Swim America versus Red Cross Swimming. So it also said to be on the lookout for the Membership Appreciation Days and Membership Specials coming in November.
Any questions for Kim? And we'll go on to Early Childhood, Community Coalition.
Okay, that's me. Heather Sanders is our Early Learning Supervisor and she did send me some notes today. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago. Early Learning had a wildly successful fundraiser selling Droulin Moose chocolates. The ECFE and preschool families sold $32,398 of chocolate and we get 27% of that, which is remarkable. The profit will go towards items for teachers in their classroom and the PTO will be using the additional funds for teacher conference meals and teacher appreciation. And we also had a huge Pumpkin Pals event this past Friday night in the gym, in the FAC gym with over 100 families. So we had tons of families, friendly games, storytelling, food vendors and costumes. And Dr. Velmuth and Sandy Laxton came and spoke to our PTO about the referendum, which was very helpful. Early Learning were the pioneers in putting out big vote signs on sandwich boards in the parking lots of the CEC and they still put them out daily, which is great. They are combining our ECFE and preschool catalog for the first time this year. A birth through five-year offering catalog will come out in January.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions for Jean? Next, we have Finance and Facilities. Haven't met, but we will. Up soon, in November. And then Joint Powers. Dan, do you have anything?
Nope, not, no meetings since the last.
Equity Committee, and we haven't had any meeting. Anything new on the horizon as far as equity is concerned? And then District Advisory Committee.
Next meeting is in December.
December for Carrie. Okay. New Prague Area Education Foundation, Jean?
Yeah, that's me again. I, I want to just take a minute to express what a privilege it is to be on these committees, because it's, it gives us such a perspective on how many good things are happening in our district. And there are so many things, I just can't believe what my eyes have been open to, even being in this district for so many years with so many kids of my own. And I'm learning new things all the time because of opportunities like this to be on these committees. So I appreciate it. So, as far as our New Prague Education, Area Education Foundation, I just want to take people back to the purpose of it. It is to raise funds and provide resources that enrich learning opportunities for our public and private schools in our district. On Friday night, this past Friday night, we had our Evening for Education, which was a fundraiser. It was hosted at the Next Chapter Winery. And I want to give a shout out to Tony Boothie, Cheryl, Lisa, who led the committee, Shalina, Brad, Eric, Jill, Jessica, Janelle, Julie, Sarah, Nathan, Callie, Ashley, and Jane. There were others. But it was a wonderful night. It was the fourth annual gathering. And I'd like to say I think it's been the best yet of the ones I've attended. Close to 135 people were there. It was wonderful turnout for income as well. We had lots of generous people who wanted to, to donate. So we had bucket raffles, silent and live auction items, gift cards, cork pull food, snacks, and fun music. It was awesome. And this is just a wonderful foundation that is for our kids, both in the classroom and college scholarships as well. So.
And now we'll go on to the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, thank you. I would echo what Jean talked about, the Education Foundation Evening of, of Education on Friday night was a wonderful event. I'd put numbers to that. I think last year where they gave over $100,000 in scholarships on the Senior Achievement Night. And so their efforts are considerable. And it was not only a great night to raise some money for some very worthwhile causes, but it was also a fun night to, to celebrate as well. I'm going to share more about the referendum campaign in just a bit. But I would be, I would say, good news and gratitude. We had our last Citizens Advocacy meeting earlier this evening, and I believe there were close to 30 people who were there for that meeting tonight alone. And so they have been working very hard behind the scenes to, to help share the message about the referendum campaign. And 35, 30-ish people showed up on the last meeting, I think as a testament to the work that they have done and the leadership that has been provided. And then lastly, I would say gratitude. I want to thank you for, Mr. Chair, for recognizing Don. Now, I always say Dvorak. Now, you said it a little different, so say it for me one more time, please.
Dvorak.
Dvorak.
Dana Dvorg.
That's the Czech, Czech pronunciation.
You're in trouble.
That's what I've always heard it as. So I will say, my friend Don visited me quite a bit. And was a, was a great friend for the school district. In fact, I have exchanged voice messages with Marcy. And so thank you for recognizing him. I know he was a dear friend of yours. And he's going to be missed. He, he stopped by a lot, right? And was always down in the FAC. And so we keep Marcy in our thoughts and prayers. And Tim, who works for us as well, as well as those nine grandchildren that were near and dear to his heart. So I'd like to toast him as well, and his family.
Next, we have the Reports and Discussion Items. The first one is the First Reading of Policies.
That's me. Let's see. We start with 208, Development, Adaptation, and Implementation of Policies. The purpose of this policy is to emphasize the importance of the policymaking role of the school board and provide the means for it to be an ongoing effort. This is a legislative policy. Questions or concerns, Ann?
None.
Kim?
No.
Danny?
Good.
Carrie?
No.
Jean?
No.
Dan?
I'm interested in what we think in 3A, where it says the school board has jurisdiction to legislate policy with the force and effect of law for the school district. And I'm interested in what that phrase means.
Anything else?
Nope.
Moving on to 404, Employment Background Check. There's also a form that goes with this, so you should be aware of that. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe and healthful environment in the school district in order to promote the physical, social, and psychological well-being of its students. To that end, the school district will seek a criminal history background check for applicants who receive an offer of employment with the school district and on all individuals except enrolled student volunteers who are offered the opportunity to provide athletic coaching services or other extracurricular academic coaching services to the school district, regardless of whether any compensation is paid or such other background checks as provided by this policy. The school district is, may also elect to do a background checks of other volunteers, independent contractors, and student employees of the school district. Questions or concerns, Dan?
None.
Jean?
No.
Carrie?
No.
Danny?
Good.
Kim?
No.
Ann?
None.
525, Violence and Prevention. The purpose, purpose of this policy is to recognize that violence has increased and to identify measures that the school district will take in an attempt to maintain a learning and working environment that is free from violent and disruptive behavior. The school board is committed to promoting healthy human relationships and learning environments that are physically and psychologically safe for all members of the school community. It further believes that students are the first priority and that they should be protected from physical or emotional harm during school activities on and on school grounds, buses, or field trips while under a school district supervision. This is also a legislative policy. Questions or concerns, Ann?
None.
Kim?
No.
Danny?
Good.
Carrie?
No.
Jean?
No.
Dan?
Yeah, I've got a couple. And so for 3F, I'm interested in, in kind of the principles that we use to determine the proper amount of time for removal for assaults that occur inside the classroom.
Say that again, please.
So it says that it'll, people who are assaulting people inside or engaging in violent behavior in the classroom will be removed for appropriate time. But that's pretty vague. You know, an assault seems pretty severe to me. And so wondering, you know, wondering what we think is appropriate and how we define that. And then I also have one on 3I. And so, you know, the, the million dollar question is, you know, how do we weigh and resolve conflicts when there are mutually exclusive beliefs or needs between our students? And so a little bit of conversation and understanding of what we're committing to when we say that.
Try that one more time.
And so in 3I is talking about making everyone and taking care of all, all beliefs, all religions, and things like that. Sexual identities, the whole nine yards. And so my question is, how do we resolve conflicts when there's mutually exclusive needs between those protected classes?
Are the words protected classes in there? I'm looking for a quote so I can find it.
Um, let's see. Let me pull up 3I. I've got too many screens running right now.
I can read it if needed.
Yeah, so, so basically.
Are you using the term protected classes on your own?
I think there's a list of protected classes in there. So it's shorthand for, you know, so we're defining things that are objective, that are based on race, sex, minority groups. And then it goes in there, identifiable, it goes into a little bit of there, and then, and then it probably rolls into J a little bit as well. J is probably a better paragraph for that statement.
Can you see it? Okay.
Well, it's right in front of me, yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thanks.
Yes.
And then I've got one on J. There's some strange language in, in paragraph J, where it says that one person's behavior can disrupt the education process or cause others to react in violent or illegal manners. And I'm interested in, you know, what, when a violent or illegal manner would be an appropriate response to, to something that's not otherwise prohibited for other reasons.
Oh, the very last sentence.
Yeah. You know, I, I understand the, the prohibitions on the other ones, you know, you know, to, you know, going after religious or other protected classes, right? It doesn't say protected classes, but that's kind of the categories in there. But to me, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned where, from an agency standpoint of, people are responsible for their own actions. I don't think anybody can say anything that justifies a violent or illegal reaction. Right? And so I think we're, I think we're saying there's things that that type of reaction could be a reasonable thing that we would understand. And I'm trying to figure out when we would understand somebody engaging in violence, you know, for an otherwise not prohibited thing.
Is that it?
Yep, that is it.
Moving on to five, everybody else okay? Okay. 529, Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. And there's a form that goes with this too, so be aware of that. In an effort to provide a safe school environment, the assigned classroom teacher and certain staff members should know whether a student to be placed in the classroom has a history of violent behavior. Additionally, decisions should be made regarding how to manage such a student. The purpose of this policy is to address the circumstances in which data should be provided to classroom teachers and other school staff members about students with a history of violent behavior, and to establish a procedure for notifying staff regarding the placement of students with a history of violent behavior. This is an MSBA recommended based on blended legal provisions and proven best practices. So it's a MSBA recommended policy. Questions or concerns, Dan?
Yeah, so if I understand 11, or 3C, it defines the history of, of violent behavior. It looks like it's looking past, back up to two years is the maximum look back period on it. And the way I would understand this policy is that a student could be transferred into the district with a history of violence towards other students. And there's no notification to the other students if we were placing somebody with a history of violence with them and the teacher is the only one who knows that. Is that a fair assessment? And what is the threshold for not placing somebody with a history of violence inside the classroom? I think one assault in two years is a lot.
Anything else?
And then D, as far as incidences of violence, as far as what's classifying people as engaging in violent behavior. And one question I had with our violence policies, if a student is physically attacked and they defend themselves, and let's say the other student that they're defending themselves gets hurt, is that considered a violent behavior by the student who engaged in self-defense?
And that's 3D?
Yes.
Oh, I started scrolling already, sorry.
Okay. Anything else, Dan?
Nope, that's it.
Jean?
No.
Carrie?
No.
Danny?
Good.
Kim?
No.
Ann?
None.
That would be it. The only thing, other thing I want to make a note of is that I think, if I'm correct, Dr. Vellmuth, there will be no first read policies offered in November because there's no work session scheduled for December. Is that correct?
Yeah, if we want to follow the protocol, I think that's a discussion we should have as part of the protocol for the November study or work session. If we want to follow that plan, then that would be the case.
Can we put that on the agenda for the work session for sure?
I will do that.
I'm done. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to item 10.2, the referendum discussion.
Janelle just asked if I needed help, and we all know that I was going to need help. So.
That's why she's here.
So many things.
Yeah, right. That, that was a softball for you all to, to take. I've given this presentation many times. I was going to count earlier today, but didn't get a chance to do so. And I know you've seen this as well. I recognize also that the greater community is watching. And so as I go through it, I'm going to go through it in a little different format tonight and, and kind of share just some of the probably most frequently asked questions or feedback that, that we have received, that I have received in my tours of our building, our, our PACs or PATs, the various community presentations that we have done as we go forward. And again, I, I am extremely grateful for the work of our, of our staff, for the, how they have, in addition to all the other things that they're doing at what is always a busy time of year, to consume information, to share information, to do so enthusiastically. And then also very grateful for the work of the, the advocacy campaign and the work that they have done to, to not only remind people why this is mission critical to the school district, but also to be just really good, strong advocates for our school system and our community. And I think you should all be very proud and thankful, and I know you are along with me. So again, my job tonight is not to tell you or people to tell people how to vote. That has never been my charge throughout the campaign. It's been to share as much information as we possibly can. You've seen this. This is nothing new. And you've seen that I, I commend you all for the use of data to, to how you made the decision to land on one question at $2 million request over the, over 10 years that would equate to $20 million or an additional $510 per pupil. There isn't a, one of the questions that I get, is there an inflationary factor in, built into this? And yes, there is. And that's important to us because as people's personal finance increases and is affected by inflation, so is the school district. And so one of the questions I get often is, how would the school district not have to come to voters more often, right? If this were to be approved. And one of the strategies and one of the thoughts behind, including the inflationary factor, is that'll allow us to continue to, you know, to absorb some of those inflationary increases over time, which will hopefully allow us to be more financially stable for longer. So we won't have to go to voters if we're lucky enough to have this approved. So again, this, this request is, has, does have a tax impact. And for a home valued at about $400,000, it's a $20 a month. As a reminder to the people watching, and you remember this, it was really important for the school board to keep that, that, that tax impacted around $20 a month. And so in the fall of '23, the average value was $350,000. Now it's $420 a month for us. If that home is valued at $400,000, would, would yield $510 per pupil. And again, that equates to around $2 million or $20 million for the life of this referendum. And a reminder, one more time, for people to go to our website. There's lots of information there, including a tax calculator where they can understand what their actual impact would be. Again, these are not threats. These are really the logical consequences that if we unfortunately have to face a significant budget reduction, I would come to you with a recommendation that would have in some way, shape, or form affect maintaining class sizes, transportation services, and programming in order to eliminate or have, if we had to make additional budget reductions. I can't promise that even if this referendum is passed, that some way, shape, or form in the next several years, because school finance is reactionary by nature, that we wouldn't have to have a discussion about class sizes, transportation services, or maintaining programming. I know that's hard for people to understand. But these are the logical things that in some way, shape, or form would be impacted if a significant, another significant reduction were to, were to be in our near future. And so you can see class sizes. And again, this isn't to lower class sizes. Another question that I get quite often, this is to maintain these average class sizes. And I hear my teacher voice in, in the back of my head right now reminding me to remind you, to remind the audience, that these are indeed averages. In some of our high school classes, they're closer to 40 than they are to 30. These are the average class sizes you will see. And we've done our class size study. And we will update that again and share that with you like we did in the winter of last year. This is about maintaining transportation services in these walking distances. And yes, it's not just the walking distances, as I'm oftentimes reminded. It is also the length of time that students ride buses if they live in a rural area or one of the surrounding communities. So this would mean that we would take buses out of our system, bus drivers, buses offline. Kids would need to be, would be asked, they could be asked to walk more. It could be up to one mile elementary, and it could be up to two mile secondary. It also would have. It also would have an impact on the, um, length of a bus ride. Lastly, this, the, the other thing that, that, that we've talked about, and I know you've seen this, is the seven-period day at both the middle school and the high school. Um, it could be a combination of one or the other, or it could be both if budget reductions are necessary. And probably the best way that I've used to describe this to people is that students in New Prague who enter into high school as a freshman get 56 opportunities to take classroom, to take classes. A next logical step, if we were not able to provide and support the seven-period day would be a six-period day. I don't know if that's exactly what we would do, we would need some time to study that. But instead of 56 opportunities, you would have 48, or they would have 48, and you need seven to graduate, 47 to graduate. This would have a significant impact on electives and exploratories and the arts. Um, that, these are the areas that would, that would be hit the hardest if we were to move away from the seven-period day. And so we're hoping to be successful next week, next week, to avoid, um, $7 million plus in reductions, adding to that list of $7 million. Another question that I get that I haven't written down is if you have declining enrollment, and we talked about that a little bit more, why aren't you doing other things? And the answer is, we are. We didn't need to make reductions last year, but we made $520,000 of cost containments in our elementary schools. We reduced teachers because we don't have as many elementary school students now as we did last year and the year before. And so, um, those cost containments are also baked into those other difficult decisions we made around budget reductions, but we're not waiting. I think we've been pretty active in looking for ways to, all the while, maintain high-quality programming, but doing so in an efficient and effective financial manner as well. Um, again, state sources of, of, of how this plays out, um, coming to a theater near you is more discussion around fund balance. Um, I think you saw that earlier from the audit, and we're in a much better space, um, in terms of fund balance. But we do need to, and we've been talking about this for some time, we'll have more clarity when we, when we start to gather in November again. But we need to have a, a, a discussion about what you want from us in terms of a fund balance. So Mr. Fell is gonna be working on some of those things in preparation for our November meetings, um, to give you more information so you can make an informed decision, because there's a lot going on at the state level, and there's a lot going on at the federal level, um, that we need to be prepared for just in case. The good news is, is that our fund balance is, um, is going up. It's headed in the right direction. And again, this is, we're not unique in this. This isn't because, um, we talked about those three factors earlier, um, the cost of doing business in, in 2025, we talked about funding that hasn't kept pace with the rate of inflation, um, and we've talked about partially and unfunded mandates. And when you combine those three with declining enrollment like we have, um, that's where we're at. Um, and so are many of our surrounding communities. Have you seen on this slide, the ones that aren't here recently went to voters and were successful. So, um, we would like to, you know, we know that this is a tax impact, uh, we recognize that, um, but we would also remind people that, I think this is really important for us to remind people that the New Prague Area Schools' contribution to taxes over the last several years have gone down. And they've gone down by $15. You can see what the average was in '23, um, or the tax impact on an average-priced home, um, because of declining enrollment, because we were able to sell off, or, or some of our debt fell off our books. Because we have such a good, um, bond rating, we were able to refinance. We did that, um, just about a year ago plus. I don't remember exactly when that was. Um, the tax impact for, for, in terms of the school district, has gone down by $15 on that average-priced home. And so we would like, we say, and what I have been saying, is we would like that $15 back, plus five more, and that would be our fair and what we believe to be modest request. Again, we're hoping to avoid reductions, and those reductions would come in some way, shape, or form in class sizes, programming, and transportation services. The last thing, and I'll open it up for any questions after this, is this is, um, I, I would make the case that this is a modest and reasonable request. When you look at where our neighboring districts are, many of whom we just saw before are going to their, to their citizens for an increase, um, this is a, this is a significant increase for us. This is something that we would, I would make the case, we need a great deal. It still is on the fairly low end of where we're at in terms of school districts around. Um, and on the left-hand side, you can see our neighboring school districts. On the far right-hand side, you can see the amount of revenue that are local, the average for local, as well as the statewide average. And again, um, this, this to me reminds people that this is a modest but needed request. Of the 329 school districts in the state, we are at the bottom 4%. And if we're so fortunate to have this passed in a little over a week from tonight, um, we might be up to the 10, 15 percentile, but, but not more than that. And the fact that we have been able to provide the class sizes that we provide, that we have the transfer ser- transportation services that we provide, that we have the programming that we provide, um, that we have the facilities, quite honestly, that we're able to provide, and this is the amount of revenue that we've received per student in comparison to, um, to our neighboring, uh, communities and school districts across the state, is a testament that even if we were to get this infusion of money, we'll continue to be good stewards of our taxpayers' investment into our schools and fiscally conservative in a way, so that we're gonna make sure that our money is where I would argue, and where it should be, and where our community expects it to be in our classroom. And again, this last slide just shows the print of percent of expenses in terms of how our money is spent, and I am, I'm super proud that, uh, 48% of our expenses go into our classroom. And when you look at the comparison in terms of the local and the statewide average, um, I, I think we all should be proud and thankful for that. Um, we provide special education services that I think are, are some of the best around, and we're doing so, high-quality services and doing it, being good stewards of our investment into our schools. And, and our administrative costs are lower, they're even lower than what you see on the screen. Um, and I think we're providing pretty darn good administrative services in a lot of ways, from both an operational and an academic perspective, and our costs are lower than both our, our, our local average and our statewide average. This is our strength, and when we're looking for resources, this is also our biggest challenge. Because, not as a threat, but as a logi- logical consequence, um, if we're not successful, we'll have to have an impact on the area that I think we're holding the most, placing the most value, which was in our classrooms, unfortunately. So, um, I've had, um, a lot of good opportunities to go out and speak to lots of different people. I've had lots of good feedback. Um, I will stand for any questions that people have. We have one more week of early voting, including extended hours on Wednesday night and Saturday. Um, and many, many, many people receive, uh, deserve thanks, but probably nobody more than, uh, Janelle for the work that she has done and, and her team have done with early voting. Um, I don't really wanna know how much time she's put in, because I would feel even more guilty than I already do. Um, but she's done a ton of work, as have a lot of people in terms of, uh, taking our plan and putting it into place. So, uh, thank you for listening one more time. I'll stand for any questions that people have.
I have one, and I don't know if I should approach this with you or maybe Brian. On a six-period day with 48 choices, only 40, wait, 47, 48 choices, 47 slots, does that mean kids don't get study halls anymore, they don't get free periods anymore? Is that true or not?
Yeah, I don't have all the details. I could get that information for you. Again, I'm, one of the, I'm, I, I don't know if it would be the, the six-period day if we would go to. Obviously, if we need to get into that type of discussion, then we need to look at what our options are and what else is out there to identify what we could go to that would be high-quality but less expensive, right? Um, I think I would speak for our staff to say, they would say that this is the best model. I would say this is the best and the most expensive model. There are other options out there that we would need to vet and then bring that information to you, including, um, um, study halls and different things like that. I don't have that off the top of my head right now.
Then maybe you won't have this either, but as long as it was brought to me, I'll bring it to you. Um, with 40, 48 chances to get 47 credits, that means that a student who might struggle would only have one chance to fail a class and come back to be able to, without having to go through extra credit recovery and things like that. Is that true?
Um, I, I would, my, my hunch is, yes, I haven't studied other models in depth, but I, my hunch is both your question about, um, study halls and credit recovery would become even more important. The answer to both would be, they would both be impacted. Um, I don't have all that detail, though. I, I.
Thank you. You had more than.
I hope to not have to get smarter on that, to be honest with you.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions, Randy? Andy, I'd like to thank you as well. Uh, you're passing around, thanks to a lot of people, and justifiably so, but you've worked very hard tirelessly on getting the information out to our public. Um, I, I think you've done a superb job, and, and, and you've been in this from the get-go. This isn't the way it was when you did the first referendum, where you stepped into it kind of cold feet and the whole bit, but, uh, you've, you've run this baby very well, and, uh, congratulations for the good work, and we've got the results coming up next Tuesday.
Absolutely. Total team effort, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Janelle.
And next we go to item, uh, 11.3, and that's the approval of the 2026-27 district calendar.
Are there any questions about?
We, we've got it, we've got it in.
Oh, does it want me to pull it up? I'm gonna step away from this table right now.
We, we have it on our.
I'd like to thank Janelle for all the help she offers, Andy.
Are there highlights that you'd like to cover as far as, uh, things that, that the calendar has?
I would invite Director of Academic Services. To come back up and give you a few highlights of the calendar, and then she'll stand for any questions that, uh, that people may have.
Yep. Um, so it's pretty standard from this year. Do you want your glasses, Andy? Um, pretty standard. The one change that we did make was, um, we are going back to having two days of assessment conferences at the elementary level. Um, this was a change that, that has been our protocol for many years, and then this past year, we changed it, um, to less hours and added in a staff development day. Uh, but after consulting with staff, the, um, resounding response to that was to have the assessment days back. So, um, the March Staff Development Day that we have this year was not embedded into the calendar for the following school year. Otherwise, it pretty much follows the calendar from this year, and we do end that Memorial Day weekend. It does get tricky. Janelle has to work her magic, particularly because Labor Day was so, is so late in 2026. So, um, yeah, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Warren? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the 26-27 district calendar.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes 7-0. Next, we'll go on to item 11.4, the resolution governing, um, application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation.
Take it away, Dan. Whereas the Minnesota High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the governing board of the New Prague Area Schools District 721 recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the Minnesota High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of the New Prague Area Schools District 7021 supports the school's application to the Minnesota High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second. Awesome. It is open for discussion. Um, on, from my perspective, um, I'd just like to remind everybody that the Minnesota High School League, along with Minnesota Department of Education, has been found in violation of, uh, civil rights laws by the U.S. Department of Education and the Health and Human Services Office of Civil Rights. And so, um, I think it's incumbent on us, as, as I know I've heard many times, we talk about how much we care about, uh, following the law and upholding it, that we should do what we can to encourage the Minnesota High School League to, uh, comply with federal law. One way we could do that, I'm not suggesting we withdraw from the league or not participate, but we could say we noticed that they're not in compliance, and we would ask them to become compliant.
May I speak? I would just like to say that in order to follow the Minnesota State High School League, we are also following state law. So we are in compliance with state law.
Do we recognize the supremacy clause?
Well, right now, I believe that the courts will be working on this probably for a couple of years, so I don't think we have the time nor the, uh, ability to see how that is going to play out, because this is going to be handled by the courts and not by legislation.
We do not believe we have time to weigh in on whether or not we believe males should be in female-protected spaces or female-protected sports in compliance with Title IX?
I'm just going to say that, um, I take the oath that I took pretty seriously, and I took an oath to uphold the law. Presently, the rights of all students, regardless of gender identity, are codified in Minnesota state law. Um, I think adding a discussion about the rights of transgender girls participating in girls' sports to our agenda might give the appearance that we have the ability to affect policy regarding this issue, and we do not, not at this time. Um, I don't see this as a discussion about this as board work, but, um, the work of our state legislature, and so I would not support any discuss, any further discussion about it.
Any other discussion? All right, Karen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Dan? Yes.
Next, we have item 11.5.
It did. I think it was Denny was very quick on it.
I did for, I, well, I saw move, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was Ann.
I second. I. Thank you.
I don't know, I didn't keep track of them. Somebody said it, I know.
It was, it was hard to hear.
Yeah, yes. I don't remember either.
We'll look back and see what we can do.
No.
Uh, next is 11.5, resolution, uh, concerning the support of the Minnesota State High School League supporting Form A, I'm sorry, Form B application.
Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the governing board of New Prague Area School District 721 recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and when there, whereas the Minnesota High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools to provide seminars, training, opportunities, or support for specific school functions for students, faculty, members, officials, and others who are involved in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of the New Prague Area School District 721 supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form B grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a clear second?
Second.
Awesome. Open for discussion? Same objection?
Is there some clarity on what this is for?
I have a little more detail, um, from, uh, direct athletics director, athletics and activities director, Mr. Scogrobo. Form B is, is used to, we have to develop a plan to how we're gonna use funds that exist, recognize and promote high school students' participation in extracurricular activities. There are some categories, they can do leadership initiatives, health and safety, transportation that reduces barriers for participation for students. And Mr. Scogrobo is working with Director of Health Services, Lindsay Papé, on, um, Form B, we're gonna use it to purchase more AEDs for our, for our buildings. And so, um, this, that's what this is about. It's about, you have three different opportunities, leadership initiatives, health and safety, and transportation, and they're going the health and safety route, and they're hoping to be able to purchase more AEDs for our buildings.
So it's money coming from the high school league?
I, it's my understanding, yep.
Any additional questions or comments? Call the question in. Karen?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Dan? Yes.
And finally, we have item 11.6, resolution to accept a donation.
Oh, that one isn't my list. Whereas the New Prague Area School Board of Educ- Whereas the New Prague Area School Board of Education has established a policy concerning the acceptance of gifts to the school district, and whereas the policy states that the school board may receive for the benefit of the school district, bequest, donations, grants, and gifts for any proper purchase of the school board shall have the sole authority to determine whether any gift with a value of $1,000 or more, any precondition, condition, or limitation on use in the proposed gift with a value of $1,000 or more furthers the interests of or benefits of school district and whether it should be accepted or rejected. And whereas a school board may accept a gift valued at $1,000 or more only by adoption of a resolution by two-thirds of the members, and whereas an anonymous donor wishes to donate $2,500 to the Fitness and Aquatics Center for a swimsuit dryer in the men's locker room, now therefore be it resolved that the New Prague Area School Board of Education shall accept the donation under no conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Clear second? Awesome, it is open for discussion.
Already a swimsuit dryer in the women's one?
Yes, there is.
It's broken in the men's and it's, causes quite a bit of consternation at the joint powers meeting. I did not know they cost 2,500 bucks, though. I was shocked at how much a little spinner costs.
They work really well, I gotta say.
Awesome. Any additional questions, comments? All right, we'll call the question. Karen?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Dan? Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes 7-0. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Danny.
And don't forget to vote if you haven't done so already.
Yes.